Good evening. I'm Erin Boucher, chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting for Wednesday, October 15th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329 and streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connection's website. Thank you to Liz Poploski and Shrewsbury Media Connection for their assistance with our broadcast. Tonight's meeting will be rebroadcast on SMC's website and their YouTube channel between now and our next scheduled meeting. Before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like to take a moment to recognize and honor Mr. Jonathan Butler, a dedicated teacher at Sherwood Middle School who passed away suddenly on October 8th at his home following a medical episode. Mr. Butler was a math and science teacher on Six Orange, who was in his 12th year teaching in Shrewsbury Public Schools. During that time, Mr. Butler impacted the lives of countless students. He was a valued educator, colleague, and friend who deeply cared for his students in our school community. This loss is deeply felt, and we extend our heartfelt condolences to his family, friends, students, and colleagues. In recognition of Mr. Butler's service to our community and in mourning his loss, we ask that you now join in a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Butler, whose legacy will live on in the lives he touched. The first item on the agenda this evening is public participation. Tonight, we have not received any requests to speak at public participation. Public participation is available to all residents who would like to address the committee regarding concerns regarding policy, budget, and the performance of the superintendent. In the future, if anyone wishes to speak at public participation, they should contact the chairperson in advance of the next scheduled school committee meeting. The next item on the agenda is Chairperson and Members' Report. Colleagues, anything to share this week?
No.
The next item on the agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you, Ms. Boucher, and thank you for recognizing Mr. Butler. With a moment of silence, I do want to add my condolences on behalf of all of the staff of the school district. Want to particularly note the excellent job that the Sherwood leadership team and our district leadership team have done in supporting not only Mr. Butler's students but his colleagues. That was a shocking loss last week, and it has felt deeply throughout the school district and the community, so thank you. I also wanted to mention two things this evening. First, I mentioned in my last couple of emails last night on the WCVB Channel 5 Chronicle News Magazine, it was a feature on people with autism, and they did a segment that included a video footage from interviews and a visit to Maple and Maine for our RISE program. It was an excellent piece. I would encourage those watching to Google RISE on Chronicle Channel 5 and really so proud of our students and our staff there and the quality of the program they've created and how we're helping to build independence among our students who require ongoing educational services from the time they leave Shrewsbury High School to the time they turn age 22. It is a fine program, and we are just really proud to have that as part of our school district. Secondly, I wanted to note that this morning, we had a donor breakfast at Shrewsbury High School. I know a number of the school members were able to be there. It was hosted by Dr. LaZott, the Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnerships and Well-Being, Kathleen Cohen, our Director of Alumni Development and Community Relationships, and Karen Aris, who's our Career Technical Education Coordinator. We had students speak, some staff were able to speak. The big focus was on some of the ways in which our donors to the Colonial Fund have enabled us to gain really key equipment for our innovation pathways, Career Innovation Pathways Program at Shrewsbury High School. In the biomedical field, they were showing off the new animatage table that is just a hyper-realistic way to look at human body systems, dissections, cross-sections, just incredible. And to see how our Dr. Dabag, our biology teacher, and her students are using it was really a revelation for me. Then also the equipment for our Advanced Manufacturing Course, Mr. Rick Doherty, we visited his classroom and heard from some of the students who were doing designs using that equipment, using the CAD software, just really hands-on, engaging educational experiences that our students are getting, you know, partially through our regular program but because of these extra equipment that had been afforded to us by very generous donors. I did want to mention, in addition to some individuals who have given, and particularly an anonymous donor who was very generous earlier this year, there were three local businesses, Winway Solutions, Charles River Labs, and PI Physique Instrument, who are big contributors to the Colonial Fund and who are connected with us to try to make these innovation pathways and more opportunities for career awareness for students available to them. So really a great community partnership for the district, and it was really gratifying to be there this morning to just see how far that program has come in a short amount of time. So appreciate everyone who attended, and again, anyone, everyone who made donations that have made those additional purchases possible outside of the regular school department budget. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee Report. Under the Massachusetts Education Reform Act, school districts are required to have a student advisory committee consisting of five high school students who are elected by the student body. The SAC is required to meet with the school committee during the year to review various issues of concern to the student body. Mr. Andrew Smith, Shrewsbury High School's social science teacher, has served as the faculty advisor to the SAC, and we've received your agenda. So if you'd like to come forward and share your report this evening, and if you could introduce yourselves, please.
My name is Gaieth Reire, and I'm honored to serve as Chairperson for the Shrewsbury High School Student Advisory Committee during the 2025 to 2026 school year. Thank you for having us here. My fellow members will introduce themselves.
Hello, my name's Calvin Sango. I'm a senior, and I'd like to say, thank you for having me here two weeks in a row.
My name is Daniel Molina, and I'm a high school senior.
My name is Sabrina Welch, and I'm a high school senior.
My name is Christian Southen, I'm a senior.
Student life. With the start of the school year, new opportunities and challenges have arisen in the SHS community. Student general feeling?
Seniors are now deep in college applications, and some students have expressed a desire for clear step-by-step support on navigating the many features of SCORE, including registering for college representative visits and the recommendation letter section. However, guidance counselors have addressed this by visiting classes and providing presentations explaining the different parts of the college application process and how to use SCORE. Students are also understanding scholarship timelines and choosing which on-campus college visits to prioritize before early deadlines. Deadlines are approaching quickly, as early as today, October 15th.
With the new beginning of the school year, it's also a new beginning with the school's sharecard system. The sharecard is a cart where students can leave unwanted fruits and juice boxes for other students to be able to take at a moment's notice. While the sharecard seemingly ended with Mrs. Veris's retirement, health teacher Mrs. Burdenek helped to continue this fantastic initiative. Mrs. Burdenek's desire to keep this initiative alive comes from the sharecard's great response last year, as students loved it and it helped push against food waste. Along with special education teachers, Mr. Connolly and Mrs. Wallace, they managed to sharecard by bringing it out every morning and taking it to the donation centers in Shrewsbury. With the sharecard back, many students, particularly athletes, have a quick and easy-to-go snack right before they have to go to a game or practice.
The year has just started, and freshmen have begun their high school lives. With that, the Mentor Volunteer Program has restarted once again to help guide the freshmen through this new beginning. In this program, the mentors meet with their freshmen every homeroom day to talk about their classes and the school-wide events. This helps to connect freshmen to upperclassmen in order to help them feel comfortable enough to ask for help whenever needed.
Our school's fall SAT prep course has seen widespread usage from upperclassmen, who are taking advantage of this opportunity to learn test-taking strategies from experienced SHS math and English teachers. A common thread among students is that they wish the course would be offered in person rather than being held exclusively in a Zoom format, as this would help many to stay accountable and have an easier time paying attention with more engaging in-person instruction and feedback. Overall, the course has been received positively and has been a great resource for students in increasing their SAT scores.
Curriculum Night was a great opportunity for parents and students to communicate with teachers regarding classroom responsibilities and content. Through conversing with the student body across grade levels, more parents of underclassmen attended than upperclassmen. The student council attended the night to ensure that parents were well-guided and able to navigate the building with ease. Ultimately, this night dedicated to ensuring student success was a deeply helpful resource to bridge communication between teachers and parents. Parents have reported gratitude towards this initiative put in place to allow them to learn more about their students' experience and curriculum.
Start of college applications. The class of 2026 is slowly getting one step closer to graduating, but before that can happen, many are filling out college applications to determine the next years of their lives. Filling out college applications can be a very difficult and time-consuming process, but with the help from the numerous resources available to us as students, the process has become a bit easier. Nuts and Bolts Night was a night that guided parents through the process of applying to college as well as the action items that their kids need to complete. While the SHS hosted application bootcamp over the summer aided students in completing the tedious parts of the Common App. From around 90 college visits that allow students to show demonstrated interest and ask questions to admissions officers, to the list of local scholarships which is updated over time, the resources have been a huge help.
Gym changes. With the new year also comes the changes to our physical education programs. We now have two more added classes for students who are interested in sports and athletics such as officiating and sports management. With these two classes, students will be able to receive officiating certificates and also be educated on athletics leadership. Not only that, we also have a new weight room thanks to the $62,000 donation from the Shrewsbury Boosters and Shrewsbury Federal Credit Union. With this new weight room featuring signature series racks, in-laid platforms, custom flooring, and a full turf area, this facility provides student athletes with a high-performance training environment comparable to those of the collegiate and professional levels. From the football team to even the cross-country team, athletic father team has given this weight room high praises to which it truly deserves.
Smart Pass. Many students have expressed frustration towards the new Smart Pass system, especially during its initial rollout. The transition from traditional paper or teacher-signed passes to a digital format came with a learning curve that left many confused at first. The no-fly zone periods at the beginning and end of the school day have also caused some inconvenience for those needing to visit lockers, teachers, or use the restroom during those times. However, after conversations with the administration, these zones are in the process of being addressed. As the year has gone on, students have gradually adjusted to using the system, reducing Shrewsbury High School's paper waste and making passes more organized and efficient. From the data, it was also found that students who are out now in Smart Passes are getting back to classes faster. Many have now grown to understand Smart Pass, a process that happens with any major change in the district.
Phone policy. The phone policy which has been enacted this year that requires that students must put their phones in pockets for the duration of class has not been received well by students. Most students report inconvenience as well as concerns regarding safety. Some students have reported feeling unsafe regarding inaccessibility towards physical access to their phones due to feeling higher comfortability and having the opportunity to contact loved ones or an aide if needed. Student preference seems to unanimously lean towards keeping phones nearby, such as in a backpack to allow both in-class concentration and feelings of safety and security when in the school building. After discussing these concerns with Mr. Pizidlo, it is clear that protocols have been thoroughly examined and conducted to ensure school safety, and the building remains a safe environment. Not only that, but teachers have reported positive feelings of enjoyment towards the policy, stating that they have seen an increase in student concentration.
Co-curriculars. Students have begun to participate in the school community outside the classroom. Start of clubs. As the school year began, so did the various clubs within our school. Freshmen and sophomores are steadily getting themselves involved in clubs, with a large interest in competitive clubs such as HOSA, Speech and Debate, and DECA. Auditions and welcome meetings have reached some of the highest amount of interest this year, especially for HOSA and Speech and Debate. To begin many of the competitive clubs' seasons, they've already recruited and established teams ready for competition. For example, Speech and Debate novices just entered the team with around 30 new members joining. Additionally, the honor societies have begun tutoring for people who need it, with many already having weekly meetings to help aid the students in our community in learning various subjects.
Athletics. Our athletic teams are off to a roaring start this year, with our varsity football team beating Haverhill at the recent Colonial Way game, our crew team taking first place at the Lowell Textile Regatta, and our cross-country team winning with notable 1, 2, 4, 5 finishes against Westboro. Unfortunately, along with an increase in athletes, has also come an increase in injuries. Athletes have expressed that wait times at our athletic trainer's office can stretch up to an hour in some cases, and have reported that on some days, there are no personnel available for injury support due to scheduling conflicts with away games. While athletes feel that our trainers' services have become too overwhelmed to fully support the needs of our ever-growing student population, our athletic trainers have proved to be a tremendously valuable asset, and athletes lament their unavailability. We will be speaking with the athletic director to determine whether this is simply a scheduling issue or if additional resources could be allocated to support our injured athletes.
Events at SHS. Shrewsbury High School has hosted a variety of programs and events.
Our fall concert, held today, October 15th, will spotlight the depth of the Shrewsbury High School music program, with performances by chamber choir, trouble choir, chamber orchestra, wind ensemble, and mixed choir. Beyond celebrating student musicians, the fall concert will set the tone for a strong arts calendar this year. As an aside, I will be participating in the concert immediately following this presentation, hence my attire.
Club organizational events. The Board of Clubs made some changes, such as making it more accessible for students to access information of various clubs throughout the school. Not only that, but the recent activity fair also gave freshmen an idea of how they'd like to try and participate in the larger SHS community. And with this year's Colonial Way, a whopping 51 clubs and athletic teams participating and creating a night of fun activities with some clubs fundraising.
Spirit Rally. Our Spirit Rally was a talk of the town, with games, music, acrobatics performances from the cheer team, and even a sports car in the middle of the gym. Many of the members of this board also participated, with yours truly serving as DJ, Christian singing the National Anthem, and Calvin making a splash in the relay race. The seniors came out on top, as expected, and overall, the event was a very lively display of school spirit.
Senior events. Senior events for the class of 2026 are receiving some of the largest attendance we have seen at SHS in recent years, and the seniors are enthusiastically attending scheduled events. So far, we have had senior entrance, senior cookout, senior sunrise, senior superlatives, all of which were well-attended or well-participated in. Seniors are enthusiastic for upcoming events such as faculty dinner, prom, and breakfast. Many have reported excitement over connecting as a class and having opportunities to celebrate our year of graduation.
Thank you for supporting the Student Advisory Committee. We are now available for any questions.
Thank you.
I have a question on the SAT prep. So it's all on Zoom?
Correct.
When did it switch from in-person to Zoom? Was that during COVID? How did that happen?
I'm not sure if it ever switched from in-person to Zoom, but I know for the past, at least for me, I took it a year ago, and it's been online for the past two years.
Okay.
Yeah, but it could have been longer.
And a question around the whole phone policy, because that's something that you see a lot in the media, and all of us with our phone kind of get, you get lost in it. Are you, you know, finding that when the phones are in the pocket, that you are able to better pay attention, because you're not worrying about, am I getting a text, or should I look at my phone? How do you feel like this is working?
I just think that having the phone pockets offer an opportunity for students to offer more concentration in class. However, I do think that especially while we are high schoolers, having trust between the teacher and the student is deeply important and also prepares us for the real world when we will need to hold ourselves accountable for our own attention span and our concentration in classes. So I do think that we could use this as an opportunity to ultimately instill student responsibility. And I think in the personal level, from talking to students in my grade and in the younger grades, there has been some dispute over having more comfortability with having phones nearby and accessible, but that would be my take and what I've heard from students.
Great, excellent answer. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I love when high school students come and give us a little insight into what's going on, especially for somebody that doesn't yet have a high schooler. This is always very helpful for me. One question I have is with the athletic trainer. So explain that to me for if I'm an athlete and I've found myself that I'm hurt. Do you, how does that work? Do you just drop by the trainer's office? Do you have to sign up for it? Like, do you go down there and there's a long line? Like, how does that look as a student when you're in need of that extra attention?
Yeah, so I haven't actually been injured yet after the school, so I'll hand that over to Calvin, since he's been there a lot.
So yeah, the process is that they have a clipboard where there's a signup sheet where they will have you sign your name, and then some of the time you come in, and/or the thing you need when you're coming by the athletic trainer's office. So you can really try to like, if you need like an ice pack, then it's not something as serious as when you do sustain a serious injury. So that's how they try to like, I would say like, put, add some control over the system, you know, add some control to better manage students and who are, I wouldn't say high priority, but definitely need to get looked at. So, but it does, they definitely can get congested at some times or some moments, that could possibly do to space as well, having to lounge around for quite a bit.
I would say like, numerous of my teammates, they, I popped in once coming back from a run, and there were like a group of six, and they all said that they'd been waiting for an hour to get student services. And then I talked to another player on the soccer team, and he said that sometimes when he goes in to try and see the trainer, there's been no one there, because our athletics trainer, Walter, has had to go to away games for football or whatever other team it is, and there's just no one there to get ice packs or other injury support, so we could look at, you know, allocating some more resources to that.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do we still have, I know we would have students, college students, who might be in a physical therapy program come and do internships, do we still have that happen in the athletic trainer department?
Not to my recent knowledge, but we can definitely look into that and come back with you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we're having a freshman in school for the first time. I haven't experienced the curriculum night for the first time, so thanks for all your efforts in navigating and helping parents navigate the maze, I would say, within that stipulated time. It made my life and most of the parents' life much more easy and finding the room in that time. So that was very well-organized, and thanks for all the volunteers who made that happen. I also have the same question related to the wait times. Is with the athletic counselor, is there someone triaging in the beginning and letting you wait for like a one hour depending on the need, or is no one there to even address that? Someone looking at, okay, we'll come back to you when we will be attending more serious?
I would say, thanks to, we don't only have Walter, we also have another athletic trainer, Lindsay, so they really try to work together to really try and make sure they're on task, they have the people they need to look at. So I feel like it's a definite system between those two, like our two athletic trainers that really try to make sure they can see as many people as possible, especially when looking at the clipboard, seeing who really needs it, seeing who just needs a simple ice pack. So definitely, I can definitely see there is a system. Then those two athletic trainers, which I feel like is definitely efficient for only two athletic trainers.
May I ask a follow-up? Sure. So is there a specific timings when it's getting really high in demand, and then some other times it's, you were seen as you're there? Is it always like that?
I would say, from my time always being around that area, I would say that, I wouldn't say it's all the time, there'll be some moments where it is high, but then there will be moments where it will chill, it will calm down in a sense, where there won't be as many people, and of course, it could still be a rush. It really depends. It's not a real pattern.
Okay, thank you. I have one last question. So with the, with the, the pass thing, Smart Pass, and also with the phone and folder pocket thing, are you guys tracking the, the success rate around that? Like, are you like asking individually or at certain periods to see what's the participation pain points at the time and how do you improve it, or is?
So the app itself tracks kind of how much time you spend outside of classes by kind of totaling up that amount of time, because each pass typically lasts from five minutes to anywhere past 15 minutes is kind of a lot. But it keeps tracking that over a week, and everyone's given, I think, five passes every single day. And so overall, based off the amount of time that you click or ask for a Smart Pass and eventually like go out for five, 10, 15 minutes, it tracks that total amount of time per student. And so it gives you data on everything kind of, and it tells you how much time students have, like specific students have spent outside of the classroom, obviously not learning per week and per month and so on and so forth. And so it helps gauge how much they're actually learning versus how much time they're spending outside of that. Yeah.
Wonderful, thank you.
Can I ask one more question? Sorry. For our athletes, and for those who maybe aren't but are using it, the new equipment, the renovation that was done to the gym, tell me about that and how that compared to, you look like you're ready to tell me all about it. Tell me about what that looks like, because that was a really nice investment that came from our boosters. So I'm interested to see what that gym looks like and how that's benefiting.
It is truly amazing. I've been there, I would say about three days a week personally for me doing some training myself, and I feel like it's definitely a great environment overall, especially the change in environment, I would say it's much cleaner. And with our athletic director, Mr. Costa, he is trying to keep a more strict approach of making sure we can keep it clean, which I really appreciate. So I feel like it's definitely a great environment. The equipment is, I would say, very nice as well, and it's a massive upgrade, I would say.
Yeah, it's really nice. It's got like a set of speakers, it's got like a full, you know, mirror set, it's got like four racks of dumbbells, it's got a bunch of different pull-up bars. It's really great. It's a lot more clean and bright and like nice than the old gym, which is kind of a little bit dingy.
Do you think that more people are using it now? Or is it the same, same teams that are in there, just more things to use? Or do you think that there's more students that are coming in to utilize it?
There's definitely more students that come in to utilize it. I know with a couple of my friends, they always see it, they always feel like, oh, maybe this is nice for us to work out, do some physical activity in there as well. And they do also come by and ask our athletic trainers to add the use of the space as well. So I would say there's definitely an increase in participation within students to want to get some physical activity within our school environment.
Okay, great, thank you.
So we're talking about the athletic trainers, and we're talking, going to special town meeting, looking for a feasibility study, the funding for our feasibility study to hopefully add on to the high school. I think this kind of shows, it's not just overcrowding, it's, we're looking at the number of students who are now at the high school, number of students who are playing sports and that need to have more resources just because the sheer number of students. It's that outcome of having such a big high school. And I think when my kids were in school, Walter was part-time, he wasn't even full-time. Now we've got two full-time, if I remember correctly, trainers.
It's, sorry, it's, Walter's full-time, and if I, if I'm correct on this, it's Lindsay who's split between the high school and the middle school.
A middle school program.
So it's about 1.5 personal trainers.
Yeah, so a lot different than when my kids were there, and it's just, it's just things that other, it's that, this is what flows out of having such a big high school. There's other needs that need to be met at the same time. So it's good, it's good for us to hear this information as we move into this next stage for this hopeful feasibility study. So thank you.
Sorry to interrupt. I'm going to excuse myself now to attend my concert, which starts in three minutes. Thank you so much for your time.
Don't drive fast.
Thank you. I have a question about the homerooms and MVP, and you, I know you also have advisory. So if you could just explain how that works, because I know maybe some days you have advisory and some days maybe the MVPs are in, so to help the freshmen.
Yeah, so basically, there's two days specifically directed for homeroom days, kind of, where day fives are for advisory, where every single person's in their regular room. MVPs are not out helping freshmen, they're instead going there and learning about responsibility, perseverance, all the core values, and I believe that there's a program that they're meant to follow. And then on day ones, there's typically all the MVPs that go to the freshman classes or whichever one they're appointed to, and there's typically around four people per room of about 20 kids. And they just basically go through different things in the week, they talk to them about how school's been going, they offer any help if anyone really needs it, which there isn't much demand, but they do offer some help from, for anything really, in terms of experiences at the school and clubs and anything. And they then connect with them by playing some games or doing some activities that would kind of like bring enjoyment to the class.
That's great. Great, thank you very much. Any other further questions? Dr. Sawyer?
I want to thank the SAC for the insight you're providing into your perspective that students have around different things happening at the high school. I have a few notes I've made for myself to just follow up and Mr. Pizidlo with some questions I have, just around some logistics of some of these pieces. You know, I appreciate some of the, and I think it might have been Christian who was talking about the Smart Pass and adapting to different sorts of pieces. I actually have an email in my inbox about next year talking about a phone ban that's going to go into effect, and there's no decision made about next year yet. We know that there's a law, it's been kicking around, a bill I should say, kicking around Beacon Hill, that is going to become law at some point, is our sense, and one of the goals we have for this year is to look at what the current policy is, what other schools are doing, what this law might require of us for the next school year, and be very thoughtful about what that looks like. And we know that there's tension- Um and be very thoughtful about what that looks like and uh we know that there's tension. Uh between students and and I think the comfort of of having a phone on their person. Uh which, you know, the other side of that coin, my people say is like that, that doesn't feel healthy, that someone feels they need to have a device with them all the time and. How is that affect what's happening? There's been a lot written in recent years about the impact uh that the constant. Uh connection that young people have, uh you know, through mobile devices and what that looks like. We were talking today when we were at the high school and uh you know, for a different reason, but talking about some of the use of technology period where we're using it. Trying to effectively where we can, uh but not using technology as much when there's other pieces, we know that. We have ongoing work we have to do around artificial intelligence and and how that is impacting students, now students are using it appropriately and sometimes inappropriately, so. All those things, it's a very uh complicated uh scenario uh for any school district at this point. And and that's something we're gonna continue to work through as thoughtfully as we can. Um but the different perspectives you share are really helpful to us. Um and then, you know, at the same time, you know, certainly a theme through here of a lot of things that are very engaging. To our students that are happening, not only academically, not only preparing seniors for what's happening for the the vast majority, we're gonna choose to apply to college for next year. Um or, you know, connections I mentioned in my report earlier to, you know, how to connect to the world of work or career, whatever that might look like. Uh but then the pieces that make the culture and the climate enjoyable, and those are the senior activities, the spirit rallies. Clubs, things that kids get engaged with, I know Mr. Bizzillo and the assistant principals every year emphasize, especially to our freshman class. The importance of getting connected to something that you're, you know, try things out, get engaged uh with something that that is important to you. The academic piece is important, but we're trying to develop whole people and it really pleases me to hear all the variety of things that students are experiencing so far this fall, so. Thanks for sharing that and we look forward to your future reports.
The next item on our agenda is the uh Shrewsbury High School enrollment and class size report. Each year, the district is required to provide a report on enrollment as of October first to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Mr. Bizzillo, Ms. Nguyen will uh present an overview of Shrewsbury High School enrollment and class size by department. And uh we've received their report. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Well, thanks for having us. A lot of chairs at this table tonight, so. Get squared away here. Um. Yeah, thanks for, thanks for having us and providing us the opportunity to share um. The really complicated work that we do at the high school in terms of trying to build a master sched- map, build a master schedule. And then what it means for uh class size, so we'll walk you through it and walk the community through who's hopefully watching at home to see some of the. Key areas that we're gonna talk about tonight, so. Uh really, three things are the enrollment trends that we're gonna, we'll look at, we'll look at class size specifically. And also building capacity, which we spoke about at our last school committee meeting and it certainly is on. Uh the minds of people in the community around the feasibility, potential feasibility study for an expansion of high school. Uh this graph basically is a bar graph that shows the overall enrollment uh trends since sixteen seventeen school year. Um this year is our highest enrollment uh in ten years. The benchmark prior to that was a nineteen twenty school year, right? Um the class of twenty twenty was the largest. Uh graduating class we had in school's history. This year, we're uh up twenty-nine students in comparison to last year, fifty-six students in the last five years and a hundred and seven students in the past ten years. And we look at the average uh class size department.
Um so when we look at the average class size by department, you can take a look at, we're looking at a five-year span. Um and you look at the range in the class sizes from seven to twenty-eight point five. Um twenty, which is twenty-nine, uh so when compared to last year, there are ten out of twelve departments. That had an increase in average class size compared to last year, last year there was an increase of four um out of twelve. So when we look at the average class size of just the core academic subjects of English, social sciences. Math, science and engineering and world language. Um the good news is still that over um half or fifty-one percent of the academic classes have twenty-two or fewer students. Um and we have about twenty academic classes that have twenty-seven or more students, so you can look at the breakdown um that we have in the chart. Um and in terms of looking at class sizes of students that are twenty-seven um or more students in the class. Um you can see that it's starting to increase, um it's at five percent. Um and you can see the last about five years, it's been um increasing, especially with that enrollment increasing, so you can see. That correlation.
So one of the things that we focus on is providing access and equity to students in in our building and as you can see from the bar graph on the left. Uh we've continually increased our co-taught sections, providing more access to students. Special education students, students with disabilities and regular education students, so. We've really put a focus on this and increased our number of sections, as you can see, we have five sections in English between English nine and English ten. A number of sections into math, which include our ELE sections, which is co-taught and has, you know, we use. A bunch of different uh methodologies with our ELE population because some of our students have interrupted learning. Uh they haven't been in school a year or two, so we have a, um this is prior, our math director works closely with Mrs. Manos, our director of ELL. Our English language learners to develop really uh individualized almost curriculum to try and get students up to speed who've missed some learning for sure. And again, in science, providing opportunities both uh in the bio- biological science and chemistry for total of four sections in science. So for a total this year, last year with twenty-two sections, this year we had twenty-one. Really good news story too in terms of our focus on career innovation pathways and career technical education. Uh if you look at the number of students across the board, for those in the audience might be viewing at home, we have a manufacturing pathway. Which is designated as a, as an innovation career pathway by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're awarded some grant funding to get that program up and running. Uh we have biomedical science was, which is also an innovation career pathway that had some funding to start this. We created uh also business programming, computer science, TV and film production, early childhood edu- education. That aren't necessarily, uh we don't receive funding from the state for those programs, but we have enough students who are in the. Interested in those areas and we want to provide them an opportunity to gain some potential industry credentials or experiences provide. Prior to either joining the workforce or uh applying to college or university. As you can see, the numbers are are growing, uh starting in grade nine, uh we started this. Uh a couple of years ago in terms of some of the the pathway piece, but certainly growing, so. The idea is students would complete three core classes in a pathway and that in the fourth year, they'd either complete a capstone project portfolio. Or an internship, so we're still, still working on building that out. Another good news story for us uh in terms of using Project Lead the Way programming. Uh a number of years ago, we brought Project Lead the Way in to start an engineering program at the high school. And as you can see, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had six sections, which is the blue number on that line graph with a hundred ninety-nine students enrolled. This year, we have four hundred and five students in nine sections, so the demand for the Project Lead the Way programming courses is high. In the table on the left, you'll see it's the the three areas that have demand are computer science. Engineering, manufacturing and biomedical science. We continue to work on developing our partnerships with people in the biomedical field in terms of potentially providing students internship opportunities. Being close to uh Worcester in terms of the reactory and some of the biomedical pharmaceutical industries are there, that's one area we're looking at. Also in terms of engineering, manufacturing, the regional labor workforce demands are saying that we need to beef up. Manufacturers, a number of manufacturing jobs in the region, so we have to continue to train people uh to prepare for manufacturing. I think the United States has also taken a focus on manufacturing, trying to bring that manufacturing back, so we're trying to be on the front end of this and provide students opportunities. To be, gain some experience, again, gain industry credentials where it's through uh AutoCAD Inventor. Uh through like three D modeling or OSHA ten, CPR first aid, uh and biomedical science in terms of trying to get an understanding of. The variety of medical fields you can follow by studying biomedical science.
Um so with virtual high school, um Shrewsbury has twenty-five seats per semester. Um students do take virtual classes, this year we have about fifteen students taking um VHS. Um at the AP level, um otherwise students take it as a semester course for each semester. With the AP courses, they're full year courses and they do take up two um two seats per year, which is one um each semester. Over the last couple of years, we did have a grant through DESI for AP computer science principles. Where you can see the increase that we've had um this year due to funding cuts federally. Um that grant um lost funding um quite quickly, so we were not able to continue that.
Kudos to Mrs. Nguyen for uh, I don't wanna say forcefully, advocating for us inclusion to the uh. DESI AP computer science principles, I think it was three years ago. Uh we didn't necessarily qualify, but her persistence got us in the queue for that and. As a result, we had thirty students participate in the two years we had the grant uh at no cost to the school district, so thanks to her for that and unfortunately. With the federal funding cuts, we're no longer able to offer those seats through VHS for the AP computer science principles.
So when you look at the counselor caseloads, um this year, the um ratio, the average for each counselor is about two hundred thirty-four students. So we can take a look at, um it's starting to slightly increase. When we look at the eighteen nineteen school year, um nineteen twenty school year when we added a counselor. Um it pretty much evened out, but it's starting to creep up again in terms of the ratio.
A slide that uh has been shared at the finance committee last Thursday, I believe, and also in our previous um. Presentations around the feasibility study, uh the blue line is the enrollment starting in. Uh two thousand two, two thousand three, when the building opened, the enrollment was one thousand two hundred thirty-three students. And as you continually go across the bottom axis, um we continue to plot out. About five-year increments or so, the fourteen fifteen school year, we have sixteen eighty-four. Additionally, for those in the audience, the red line is basically the original design capacity for Shrewsbury High School, which is one thousand four hundred and seventy-five. That's what the building was built for when it opened in two thousand and two. Lamoropagano Associates uh and the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, took a look at our square footage of our building and contemporary programming within. The high school setting and has reconfigured or redefined that our building of our size and specialized program that we have. Specialized programs and population we have uh and student enrollment, it, our square footage would be able to uh comfortably fit. One thousand two hundred fifty students, so as you go across, the enrollment grows from two thousand three at twelve thirty-three. To uh our October first number, which is eighteen ninety-nine. We're about, from the green line to eighteen ninety-nine, we're about, over a little over six hundred students. And I say this, I've said this in conversation with people, that that's bigger than some high schools, many high schools in the area of single-town high schools. We continue to do the best we can, uh we've renovated spaces, we've added additional offices, we have. Decommissioned computer labs to add more additional academic space, we've really done everything under the sun to try and make sure that we can. Fit all the programming in and make sure students have a great experience, but we're really bursting at the seams. So that's where we are with the enrollment piece, it's it's a, it's the largest enrollment in our school's history. Uh and really, when getting back to this, this, the challenge of when we talk about the physical layout of the building. But people, we can talk about the physical layout, but what also lies underneath that is the actual challenge of scheduling. Nineteen hundred students who select six to seven classes, who have to be placed in those classes, where with a variety of interests. There's biomedical science, manufacturing, advanced placement, pre-calculus, calculus, mathematical modeling, whatever it may be. There's a number of issues that go into that, we talked about that during the program studies report, which we do in January. But really, to get an idea of the constraints we we have are looking at classes that we really can't move. And those, if you look on the the second bullet down, our visual arts classes have very specific designated spaces for our ceramics program, photography. Our character design and animation actually is in a computer lab that's shared on the third floor with our music department, which our music department's on the first floor, but. Some of the software for our music technology program and AP music theory program is in that lab and is proprietary for those desktop computers. Our accounting uh classes are proprietary software too, that is only, we can live on one device. Uh computer science, uh web design, cybersecurity, and those classes are in a computer lab as well. Um our engineering courses are really specifically dedicated spaces outfitted for our engineering program. Chemistry labs, biology labs, you're talking about buns and burners, gas jets, prep areas with different chemicals for both the biological and chemical sciences. Mathematical model, ma- mathematical modeling and advanced quantitative reasoning, both use a computer lab to do some of their modeling, like. Graphic modeling and have software in those computer labs as well, and that's scheduled, that computer lab's scheduled all day. And again, family consumer science, our foods rooms and child development rooms, very specific, can't really be repurposed for anything other than those. And American studies classes are uh confined to rooms that have a wall that opens up between classes for larger group instruction if we need. So those are just some other constraints when we start to build the schedule, now we have to put everyone in those rooms, try and minimize as much movement as we possibly can. Uh then we add in special scheduling such as co-taughts, advanced placement, PE and health, it just, it becomes really complicated. And that's why we're relying on Mrs. Nguyen to to help solve this puzzle every year, but. She can talk more about this, the challenges and constraints, but not only we have physical challenges, but we also have challenges in terms of trying to schedule people. And find like what classes can fit in what room during what time. Again, uh really, I'll turn it over to you, but a really, uh a really interesting visual representation of our of our space, space issue.
So when we look at the rooms, um you can see everything that's in red, um the yellow one that you see in there that's actually should be red. Um so all of these rooms, we cannot put a class in there because it's either fully occupied, um there's classes. Or or labs that meet, it could be three days, that are kind of three days and three days. Um we try to um really, it it's like a puzzle trying to fit everything in together. Especially when some classes may be, such as some of the um the AP labs, science labs, they need two days a week. But then they have to use the same space, so it's a matter, uh it gets complicated with the room piece. Um the directors are wonderful in terms of trying to make things fit, the master schedule really schedules it based on the student selection. Of courses, so this year, um in the English wing, we have two science courses, there are two science electives. That do not have labs um that are required, and then we see in the math hallway, we have two ELE classes and one English class. Um that's held in the math hallway, so these teachers have to actually move to a different hallway um to teach their class. And the next one in the science, um the social science hallways, which is the top one, we do have one world language. Um in the social science hallway and also in the science and engineering, we have two world language classes that are in that hallway as well. So you can see the complexities of really the directors working with each other when there's a conflict of rooms. In trying to have the teachers move as little as possible, at least. Um are staying in the same wing, whether it's in the A wing or the B wing, but they're only moving one or two fours. Um to try to minimize that as best as possible. Um and then we also have, um you can see the last one, which is the world language. Um hallway, and then we have the computer labs, the computer labs, again, they are very specific to the programs that are on there for specific classes. The media center um is now a business one, it used to be a full-out computer lab. Um it is a business classroom, but they use the laptop carts um for when they need the computers in that, in that room.
Will answer any questions you may have.
Um I have a question, but thank you for the amount of work that goes into building the schedule and for everything that happens at the high school. I think that this is something, this report is really good for us as a committee, especially as we're going into the feasibility study, the, you know, possibility for the feasibility study. And having conversations with people um who are in the community on what does the high school really look like, because we've said this before. Um it is tight on space, obviously at lunchtime, there's a lot of kids, the halls are congested. But it's really more than that because it's affecting the the classrooms and. Um I'm I'm thrilled like that so many students are signing up for Project Lead the Way and for our career pathways. It's current, um this is what the demand is, you know, nationally, um but we're gonna be stuck. We have four hundred five kids in Project Lead the Way and we have no more spots to put them. I would love to see those programs expand, but again, when you're looking at that chart and you just see this, this sea of red. There's literally no more spots to put them, so we're kind of capped at what we can offer students. And we've heard from the students that have come to us before and they they are saying, you know, I'd I'd love if we had more business classes. You saw the excitement in um the the two extra um, you know, physical ed classes that were, we can't do more of that um when we have nowhere to put our students. So they're sort of stuck on what they can do and again, the coursework that we have is is vigorous and they are they're getting a great education, but you know, as we're talking to to people in the community, it's more than just a small building. This is really limiting how much our students can do and they're they're really asking for more things. So I appreciate the amount of work that goes into this. This is really difficult. You're doing a fantastic job up at the high school, making sure the students are getting what they need to. And you've done so much, and I think last year you maybe said, didn't we change one of the computer labs? To, didn't we have another computer lab at some point? And we switched it to a different space, so we don't even have that lab anymore? Or did I make that up?
No, no, no.
That that was the computer lab that I was talking about, that is now a business class.
Yeah.
But they have two laptop carts that they roll in there to use it for when they need it.
So again, that's something that students are wanting, but we don't have the ability to give that to them. So that's just something as we need to think about and as we're moving down the 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 pipeline with MSBA. That's really important information for for the community, not just those who have students in the system, but the community is large to know that this is the reality of what is is actually happening up at the high school, so thank you.
I have a question around the scheduling. So we're talking about um the students and scheduling. Are you finding that there are students who want to take A, B, and C, and they can only take A and C because there's just no way to fit that class they really want? And they're losing, you know, an opportunity for something that they have an interest in that we can't provide because of this um limitations around just space.
It's mostly through electives that that happens because we try to guarantee students the core classes that they do need because they we do have to fulfill the graduation requirements. But certainly, yes, in terms of the electives, there just isn't enough room for the demand. Um and just to add on to that, if you look at the all the red that you see in terms of rooms that are occupied um when we think about the increased enrollment, um when and if there's a need for a teacher, there is not enough rooms to even add a teacher. So that's where that constraint also happens. In addition to the students wanting to take the classes, we have to look for places to put a teacher that's not moving um five times around. So um I know in the report um we look at teachers who move at least two rooms and then those that have moved three rooms, which have increased um quite a bit this year as well. So that can be confusing for a teacher because they are rolling around in the carts, in the crowded hallways, so.
And I think, you know, we're talking about, we are hoping for, you know, positive vote for the feasibility study to move this along further and it's it's not just space, you know, I think some people think it's just space and I think since the oh five oh six, when we this has been twenty years of overcrowding. There's been, uh I think, you know, what the team has done there is amazing to fit everything in, but then when you talk about the educational program and education is different than when I was in school, like we're we have different classes, we're we're focusing on different areas to prepare students for college or the workforce and like Rachel said, there's not an ability to provide those opportunities which we think are we're putting money into in a budgetary way, and we think they're very important for students today because this is a new way of educating. And you know, you might get this, well, you know, just can't you just make do? Well, we do make do. We've done this for twenty years. But when it's starting to really affect our ability to provide what students should have and what other local high schools are providing, I think that's when we get, it's it's an academic issue as well, it's not just space. And I think this just highlights that even more so, every, you know, every year it gets a little worse. And I I do hope that, you know, we can get into the feasibility study, get this addition built so that we can really do what we need to do now to educate students. It is very different and the the focus of what they need to study is different. So thank you, I always appreciate it and um a lot of credit to what you do to make this all work every year with uh ever increasing number of students there, so thank you.
Yeah, um thanks for the report. I think this is fresh off my mind as I got an opportunity to look uh to to visit the high school this afternoon. So it was it is packed to, as I I saw firsthand experience during the curriculum itself, so it's um I can't even walk in the hallways because it's so many people walking at the same time. Um but with the classrooms and everything, I think I appreciate how how all the all your efforts to make it happen. Um but one quick question related to, some of the classes might be, um like the biology, there is a lab, there is a chemicals, buns and burners and everything. So they're 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 not anymore flexible, they're you have to use it for biology class, science class. So what part of the total equation of these um spaces are set and constrained to those defined spaces? You don't have to answer it now, but if we can show it in in one of the slides saying, or one or overlay. So we do have the space, but those, some of the spaces are defined, those are uh they cannot be converted into a different class for the time being, right? Because the science class and the arts class, which has all the ceramics and everything, this is in place, you can't use it anything for anything else except the art class. So if there is some of the class or the hallways that are tied to specific programming, which cannot be used for anything else, uh if we can overlay that, that gives also a good perspective on what we are dealing with, right? Also, with the these green little rooms, there are those are still available for any ad hoc needs on specific days. Is that, well, what, how should I read that?
Those are open classrooms. Um so the one thing in terms of the open classrooms, one thing we have to think about, the number of teachers that we have. Um during their their prep time, they often have to use the department offices. Um some are very lucky to have their room open, if it's during their prep time that they could use that room. Um and and a couple of teachers might go in there, but even for teachers, mostly during their prep time, they have to use the department air rooms, which are pretty small, um depending on how many teachers are available during that time, but.
Yeah, I see, I I saw that too, because there's no more space for the teachers, so the conferences for the teachers to get engaged, have a conversation and all those things. So it's fully fully utilized uh to the maximum. So with the IT IT labs, do uh so do we have any designated IT labs at this point? Or we repurposed all of the IT labs into business class and and so on and so forth?
Yeah, we have we have one dedicated lab, which is uh M one oh three, it's right outside your office.
And right next to me?
Yeah.
M one oh four?
M one oh four. There's one lab. Office, and that's strictly for all the computer science work that we're doing. So all those computer science classes are in that one lab. Um I do wonder, and you maybe you can ask answers for me, Mrs. Wen, in terms of, I'm not sure if there's other classes that we send like Computer Science Principles or Computer Science A, like the coding, the coding stuff's in that M one oh four lab, but generally cyber and all those things are in that one lab. And that's busy all day.
Of course. One 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 other question. So with the VHS, so with the last opportunity with the grant, so do we have, is there any what what's the alternative for the students that are interested in getting enrolled in the Computer Science Program AP classes? So is that is that a done thing?
Do you mean like the VHS?
VHS, yeah.
So the VHS program, um we pay for the seats. Um we pay for the fifty seats per year, so they're they're in blocks of fifty. So if we were to increase that, then we would have to increase and and pay for another set of blocks.
But but for now, with with the with the grant being lost, we still have the uh access to the students?
Not not for that class, no.
That class, that class is not an option in the VHS menu that they have.
Sure, it could be an option, but we've always had um the majority of kids, they are choosing in terms of the AP. Usually it's micro or uh macroeconomics. Um it gives an opportunity for students who take classes that are not offered at Shrewsbury High School. So I also make sure that we have um semester courses for students that are choosing um different classes to give them the opportunity, like Psychology of Crime is a very popular class, Criminology, things that we don't offer of a student taking um taking ASL, um so American Sign Language class. So it it just gives a different flavor, so I try to make sure that um different students have different opportunities within that program.
We certainly pay for more seats with VHS as a fee for that, but we also have an allocation for, we actually have to provide teachers in for reciprocal classes to offer within VHS. So we offer uh two sections of courses through VHS. We have two teachers that teach one semester course, a semester course, first semester, another teacher that teaches another course. Semester, second semester for us to gain the price point. If you offer FTE and you do math on it, it's cost effective for us to do the fifty-seat block and offer a point two in FTE where they offer one course through VHS and people all over the country will take it and they have a they prep and VHS does all the professional development for those teachers, so we've rotated that between the number, a few departments, um it used to be between strictly with art and then went from art to world language and the social sciences, bounced around a few times depending on what our student demands are. So when the course enrollment is completed in March, we take a look at where we can allocate. If there's some wiggle room somewhere, we typically will ask people, okay, we need someone to teach that. Uh we can also pay a fee to to recapture the point two FTE, but it's gonna be more per seat at significant cost, so it's not cost beneficial to do that. Um it it's worked out, the only way we could increase VHS if we purchase more seats.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much for the for the presentation and also for the very detailed report and I would um advise the community to take a look at, it'll be released tomorrow in our school committee uh materials. There's a very detailed report that shows exactly how many students are in each section of each class at Shrewsbury High School, so for folks that are interested in looking at this prior to town meeting, next special town meeting next week to kind of see the impacts of the space constraints at Shrewsbury High School, it's it lays it all out very nicely about kind of the maximum capacity in all of these classes. Um I I point especially to like the business classes, I mean, every single business class is fully enrolled if I read this correctly. Like they're all maxed out at twenty-five students. There's not a space to be had um for and and unless additional classes were being offered. Um I did have a question with regard to the math, um and I think math classes. As I read the report, thirteen percent of the math classes currently are about over twenty-seven students, is that correct? Is that also uh you know, partially due to space constraints or is that just um how different sections have kind of worked out this year? If you could just kind of give us some more context around that, because that that seems high to me.
Um it is high and and certainly there are some sections that are high, higher than others. Um this year, we've added um an extra section of Math Connections um to support students who um Todd talked about, the students who have been interrupted learning um that needed that extra um attention to help them bring them up to um up to par to what they need. So those classes are um a lot smaller. We also have um a large number of students taking the AP Stats course. Um so math allows students to double up if there's room. So there's a lot of doubling up that happens, so the demand is there um in terms of having students double up in the math. So it raises the numbers quite a bit.
Yeah, I mean, I think a couple of years ago, we made a decision not to allow anyone to double up. You can see in the numbers, a couple, we did this analysis a couple of weeks ago around like in my head, I'm like, well, how can we only have this many kids in math and now we have this many kids this year? And it's like, well, the principal made a decision, we're not gonna double up. The reality is the demand is there in terms of providing students opportunities and if we have the opportunity to offer students um to take AP Statistics on top of their regular math class, whether it's calculus or pre-calculus, and it feels like a pretty good opportunity if we have the space to do it. But certainly, um the class sizes are high in those uh in our advanced placement courses from AP Calc BC, you can look at that report. I mean, for the community, it's forty-five or forty-six pages, so thank you to Mrs. Wen for putting it, putting it all together for us, but um certainly advanced placement courses are probably on the higher end in terms of uh class size in comparison to some of our foundational courses, it's a philosophy we've had for a number of years at the high school. So yeah, there there we are higher than than we've been in the past for sure.
I also just a follow-up on um the the difference between Career Pathways and Project Lead the Way and Biomedical Science. Is that overlapping or is that separate? So like sev- there's seventy-eight students in the Career Pathways for Biomedical Science. But then there's also Project Lead the Way students that are in Biomedical Science, so is that do you understand what I'm saying? Students or are they different, two different?
Some some other same, and then when we try and, again, trying to fill seats and some that are in the pathway will be in for a three-course, a three-core course experience. Other students who wanna try it and for upperclassmen that wouldn't have the opportunity to follow the three-course sequence, they have an opportunity to be in those electives, whether it's human body system, biomedical science, whatever it may be. And we put those in the courses to get a dose of like, okay, this is an exploratory almost course for, is this something you wanna pursue beyond Shrewsbury High School? And we have the we have the, because we're running the course and the numbers on the Innovation Career Pathways are a little bit lower. Uh we had seats available, so we offered up, we offered additional seats to upperclassmen. So certainly Innovation Career Pathway students get first choice. Then if we have seats, if there's not a demand, then we backfill it with people who wanna have experience, whether it's in cybersecurity or Computer Science Principles or coding, Computer Science A, uh or the biomedical or manufacturing field. So we do have people that aren't following the Innovation Career Pathway strand, all three sequences, but will have experiences based upon the availability of seats.
Great, thank you.
Does that make sense?
And is it fair to say Project Lead the Way is a national organization that that provides a curriculum? And there's a set of expectations around materials and curriculum and what you do. And many of the pa- many of the courses, both in innovation pathways and then our own sort of locally grown pathways happen to follow Project Lead the Way curriculum, which is nationally recognized, colleges recognize it, there's a place you can even click it on the Common App to indicate this is a higher level course, it's recognized, it's really high-quality education, so um so a real benefit I see that our, we have more students being able to access Project Lead the Way coursework than we've had in in recent years as a result of the the focus there.
I appreciate you saying that too, because uh the Department of Elementary Secondary Education takes Project Lead the Way courses as advanced courses. And as we look at our s- our strategic priorities and our school and our school improvement plan, we're looking at putting more, trying to get more students access to advanced uh coursework, and this is helping fulfill some of that through access through Project Lead the Way program, which is considered an advanced course. It has the same weight by the DESE as a Advanced Placement Course, and Dr. Soria said it too, in terms of Common App. There's a space where tell me something different that you did within your own high school experience and Project Lead the Way, Advanced Placement are in the same category based on the Common Application.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate the report, uh thank you to Mr. Zidlow and Ms. Wen. Um I think just a couple of, you know, things statistically that I wanna point out. One is that the school committee's class size guidelines for the high school, with the exception of physical education classes or large music classes like band or orchestra or chorus, are eighteen to twenty students. That's that's the goal. Um this year, thirty-six percent of class sections are within those guidelines. So roughly two-thirds of our class sizes are outside of the school committee's class size guidelines. And that certainly is a statistic that the MSBA looks at when they make decisions about which projects they want to try to support. Um certainly, that was in the materials we provided to them uh for past years, and I'm sure that was one factor among many when they invited us to go into their process uh to participate and and potentially partner on a potential addition to Shrewsbury High School. Um in addition to that, you know, in terms of just the uh uh overall enrollment, uh when we're talking about nineteen hundred students essentially, one thousand eight hundred ninety-nine will round up by one. Uh compared to a a one thousand four hundred and seventy-five or original design capacity back around what the state looked at was adequate for high school programming uh back in two thousand and two when this building opened. Um that's about almost thirty percent overcrowded. Um if you look at it at the contemporary design capacity of one thousand two hundred and fifty, uh which is what the MSBA's current guidelines uh with, you know, new expectations for things like Computer Science, Project Lead the Way, hands-on experiences, more dedicated space for special education programming with a much larger population of students with autism or related special education needs than there were certainly back in two thousand and two, all of those elements, um the design capacity is one thousand two hundred and fifty. Um at essentially nineteen hundred students, we're a little over fifty percent overcrowded. Um and certainly, I would imagine that if we could rewind um in in, you know, sometime in the near-time horizon when the school was being originally designed and built, um the community understood that there were going to be nineteen hundred students in this building. Um and not far off of that, you know, for the foreseeable future, uh I don't think people would have said, let's build it for twelve fifty. Um you don't, you don't build buildings to be fifty percent under capacity. Um so it it's just something I think that's important to note. Again, just to emphasize, there has been no specific solution that's been determined, there's no exact plan of how we might address that overcrowding with an addition. We know that would require more space if we wanna have smaller class sizes, if we wanna have more appropriate core. if we want to have more appropriate core uh building elements, cafeteria, office space, meeting space, all the things that we've cannibalized, appropriate number of computer labs, all the things that we talked about in in this evening and in recent meetings. Uh, you know, that's something that we we know it's going to require more space to solve for that. And this is not, we're a little overcrowded, we're not ten percent over, let's manage through it for a few years. We're literally fifty percent overcrowded compared to what the baseline is that the state sets for high schools in Massachusetts at this point. Um, and so I think it behooves us, and I really hope that next week our town meeting members vote um to approve allocating what will be a net of about one point four million dollars uh at the maximum of town dollars to be spent on doing a feasibility study, getting us to feasibility and schematic design so that a the most cost effective solution can be brought forward to the community uh to make a determination of whether that's worth the investment um of people's hard earned tax dollars to to uh provide what we would can hope to be adequate space for our high school programming for our students um here in the community. So that's what's at uh at play for next week, not making a decision on what the project will be, how much it will cost, what it will look like. That's the work that the architect and the owner's project manager would do over the next couple of years to bring a very detailed, very uh with with very specific cost estimates around what that would look like. Uh, and that's that's the work before us to make that investment. And I appreciate that the finance committee and the select board and the school committee, of course, have all uh voted to recommend the town meeting that we they vote affirmatively to allocate those dollars so we can do that really detailed study um and to see if the uh the the state then will share in those costs at more than fifty cents on the dollar um as a shared cost project, much like the very successful Sherwood Middle School and Beal School projects we've seen in recent years. So again, really appreciate the deal to information and uh thanks for thanks for sharing that with the committee.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the pre K to twelve enrollment and pre K to eight uh class size report. Each year, the district is required to provide a report on enrollment as of October first to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. An overview of this district wide enrollment data will be presented for school committee review by Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi. And we have a report enclosed in our packets for this week. Thank you, uh, Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi.
All right, I will kick us off here. Um, so uh we just spent a lot of time on the high school enrollment and rightfully so, but this is going to give you the overall look at the total district enrollment as of October first um and then uh more of a focus on our pre K through grade eight level um in terms of enrollment and class size. Um, this first slide just shows a few key data points and what we're looking like last year uh compared to this year on October first, which is the benchmark date the state uses uh each year. They look at other dates throughout the year in terms of midyear and then in March uh or rather from March, beginning of March and the end of the year. Uh, but October one is a really key date uh in terms of a lot of things that the state uses for budgetary purposes for the following year, et cetera. Um, in pre K, we're down about seventeen students. Um, of interest uh to the school committee is that we have this year the first two full day preschool sections. Uh, those are the two rooms we're using at uh Beal currently. Uh, we have a huge amount of interest in that long waiting list. They're both full, uh, very pleased anecdotally and some parents I've been able to speak to that in terms of the having that full day option. Uh, many more parents want that. Even with that, the remaining afternoon sections we have, we're continuing to still have difficulty filling those afternoon sections. That is not a desirable uh uh slot uh for families uh with a very high degree of interest in more full day sections. And uh I know that when the Ms. Nichols presents their school improvement plan, um, I I think you can get some foreshadowing together. We may want to continue to go in that direction with more full day sections and fewer of the afternoon um sections there as well. Um, in terms of K to four, we're down about twenty two students overall, uh, you know, pretty consistent number, a little bit where we were with last year. And then from grades five to eight, the middle school level, down sixty four students. We have some cohorts that have been smaller that are making their way up through the elementary grades into the middle school grades. Um, and then for the high school, we're twenty eight students higher than we were um a year ago. Uh, and we've seen some ongoing pressure. One of the displays in your full report in your packet, I think it was interesting to note that um the senior class this year um grew by fifteen percent from the time they were a first grade cohort over the years. And I think it's important for people to note, and we uh come back with a enrollment projection report in a couple of meetings from now. You know, one of the things that we look at and one of the things that demographers look at and one of the things that the MSBA is looking at is we're waiting awaiting their enrollment certification number for for the high school project, potential project. Um, is what is that difference from year to year? How much how much do cohorts grow over the years? Then they they dip at certain points, um, and we can talk about that in a bit. But you know, over time, our current senior class has grown by fifteen percent over their years between first grade and and their senior year of high school. Um, and then our RISE program, which we talked about earlier, featured on Channel Five last night, uh, grew by four students this year um and is uh based at Maple and Main uh building in the center of town. In terms of the overall history, uh, we're down slightly this year, but pretty consistent numbers uh since the pandemic. Um, you know, in the fifty eight hundred, fifty nine hundred, uh, high fifty eight hundreds, fifty nine hundreds uh in terms of overall enrollment. Uh, this does not count the RISE program, this is just pre K through twelve. In terms of grade level, you can see that phenomenon I mentioned earlier. Um, our larger cohorts are in the upper middle grades and the high school. Um, slightly smaller cohorts in the upper elementary grades, a little smaller than that, about seven percent less in grades one and two compares to grade three and four, for example, right now. Um, that's something we're going to be interested in to see if if there's a trend there. Um, one of the things that we do know, uh, when you know the work we're doing right now with the MSBA around the high school projections is that um they certainly demographically see that same trend overall in the in the population. You may, I mean, there's other places around the nation and the state where um student population is dropping significantly, some places where schools are closing and that. We're not seeing that, um, but we're seeing slightly smaller cohorts. But the question is going to be over time, as more housing units come online in Shrewsbury, that's going to offset some of those demographic dips that we're we're seeing as well. So um that's something that we'll certainly continue to look at as far as trends over time. Our kindergarten enrollment history, you see the one real anomaly year in twenty twenty, so that's October of twenty twenty. That's the year a lot of families chose not to send their kindergarten, who was age eligible eligible to school uh during the hybrid year during the height of the pandemic, um, recovered to more typical numbers after that. Um, we dipped a little bit last year, we hit uh, you know, one of our highest numbers since uh the mid teens, um, down more to three forty six this year, but pretty consistent what we've seen the last the last five years. Grade one, very consistent what we've seen uh the last few years as well. We had that little dip in twenty twenty one after COVID. Um, but again, that's something that uh we're seeing some consistency with. And then this other number I think is really interesting. This is the increase from kindergarten to grade one. This was always our most difficult grade to predict because prior to having universal access to full day preschool without tuition, uh, the number of students each year who might have attended private school, other options, school choice and other communities that are offered full day K, um, and then would come back to Shrewsbury for grade one. We also tend to see a fair amount of move ins for grade one, some for kindergarten as well, but people coming to the community for the first time. But you can see after Beal opened, it's become a much lower number in terms of the the cohorts, much more steady. And over time, that's going to play out, I think, with a pretty consistent number um now that everyone has access to that full day kindergarten piece. Um, so five percent being the lowest number we've had in the last decade in terms of the increase between what the kindergarten enrollment was and when that cohort moves to first grade, how much it grows by. And this next slide just talks about the the history by school um in terms of what uh first grades look like. Um, again, you know, pretty consistent in terms of what those what those numbers uh were. We always like to show this slide because it shows the the policy achievement the school committee and the district achieved uh of getting all of our students eligible to be able to go to full day um programming without charging tuition to families. A huge improvement um for our school community and and for our and for our families. Preschool, I mentioned that at the top of the uh the report. Uh, you know, this is, these numbers, of course, will grow throughout the year. Um, there's much more capacity, but as students who turn age three uh become eligible for special education, um, they will automatically be able to be added into those roles and that happens throughout the school year. So that preschool grows uh in terms of enrollment throughout the year. But at this point, the October first snapshot, we're definitely down about twenty plus twenty three, twenty four students compared to the peaks there in twenty two and twenty three. Um, I would say twenty and twenty one are anomalies because of the COVID years. Um, so we're we're monitoring that, but again, we're having trouble filling those afternoon half day sections. The the demand is not there for those right now.
All right, so the the next few slides will be our elementary slides. And what's nice this year is that it marks the fifth year. So each of these five years uh dates back to when the redistricting happened, uh, when Beal School opened and we redistricted the elementary schools. What you can see in this first slide here is the Beal School enrollment history. Uh, when the building opened, we had five hundred and eighty three students attending that year. Uh, we are now up to six hundred and thirty seven students, which um, you know, that was something that we were predicting is that over time, Beal School, uh, the enrollment would grow and we have the capacity to 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 take on that uh growth. Um, college has remained pretty consistent as well through um since redistricting, started off uh, you know, in the in the mid two fifties, but um it's been hovering just under three hundred uh students for the past three years. Floor Street again is is fairly consistent, slight dip this year, um, some dip in in some of the younger grades, kindergarten, grade one. Um, you know, one piece to to speak about the current kindergarten group is that was the twenty twenty birth year, uh, which was uh the COVID year. And there was a statistical anomaly that year where there was a significant lower number of births in Shrewsbury uh than the year before and the year after. So this year's current kindergarten class, we are keeping an eye on because that's a low birth year and we'll see how that grows. Um, but what I will say is the three hundred and fifty seven students in kindergarten, that's higher than what some of the demographers had predicted, uh, which we were anticipating a little bit, just families will move to Shrewsbury for schooling and we we have seen that trend happen. We're we're probably fifty or sixty students higher than what some of the demograph demographers were saying uh in their predictions for that birth year. Again, Walter J. Patton Elementary School, uh, again, remaining fairly consistent, down a little bit over the past couple of years uh post redistricting, uh, but hanging right around two hundred and sixty five, two hundred and seventy students. Spring Street Elementary School, very consistent here, just over three hundred students. You know, I think showing some nice pad, nice consistent patterns across our elementary schools post post redistricting. Um, as Dr. Sawyer uh shared a few moments ago, we have this group of students that are starting to come up into the middle schools that have some lower numbers in those classes. Uh, Sherwood Middle School um is down by about sixty students from last year, uh, again, because of that current fifth grade group. Oak Middle School, fairly consistent as well. Um, again, you know, some of the class sizes, some of our largest class sizes are currently at the high school. Um, and some of these uh cohorts that are coming through that are slightly smaller at the middle levels are just showing a slight decrease in numbers over the past few years. But again, overall fairly consistent. And then the high school piece, I won't um, you know, go on too much more about this, but you can see the five year trend again with the one thousand eight hundred ninety nine students as of this October first. Our special education out of district placements, um, this is a number that fluctuates consistently across the the school year. Um, and it's also a volatile budget um number to take a look at because some of these out of district placements come with a significant cost. So this is something that we keep a close eye on. Um, as of October first, we have fifty students who are placed in out of district programs. Uh, you can see the breakdown of of those placements uh below. Um, it's important to note that this does not include the twenty six students that are at RISE. Um, historically, those students would have been included in that total number. So um again, when we talk about quality of programming, we're also talking about uh, you know, great cost savings to the district uh with the RISE program and and not having to send those students out of district, keeping them in district where they belong with their uh with their with their peers. Again, we're making some gains in our vocational technical school enrollment. Uh, last year, two thousand twenty four, on October first, uh, we were at a a low that we hadn't seen, uh, I believe in all the data that I've seen. It's the lowest number um that I've I've experienced at twenty two students. We did add two students midyear uh when we um formed an agreement with Leicester and we sent a a handful of kids uh in January to Leicester for their vocational program. Um, this year we are up to thirty three students currently. At or at least as of October first, there are twenty two students at Leicester, twenty in uh grade nine and two in grade ten. Assabett has nine students, uh Norfolk Aggie has one student and Monty Tech has one student. Uh, we did, there has been some move ins into the district uh where students were attending programs previously and we've maintained uh the consistency of their schooling to allow them to stay at the at the school. Monty Tech, for example, um, the student continues to attend Monty Tech. Uh, what I will say, right around October first is when we received information from Assabett that they do have some um seats available that they're offering to students off the waitlist. I believe there's two students who are going to accept uh waitlist seats. So we are still um, you know, gathering that data and finalizing information. Now be able to update our uh vocational spreadsheets once that once that happens. But I will say that's the first time in two years that we've uh heard that we've had students get off the waitlist at Assabett. Our English learner enrollment, again, I think two thousand twenty five is very similar to what we saw in two thousand twenty three. Um, some of the uh larger number in two thousand twenty four, I think we can attribute to uh some of our migrant population who who were housed at our emergency homeless shelter. We still do have families that that are living there, but uh for many of the families that were placed there who were migrants and who are receiving EL services, um, you know, they have moved on or they have been absorbed into the community. Uh, and we are right around three hundred students or we are at three hundred students as of October first. And it's important to note that there are no preschool students in these numbers, although we have students uh who's in preschool whose language, first language is not English. Um, it's an immersion program and um we are not uh reporting those numbers from preschool. We begin reporting those numbers in kindergarten. Our special education enrollment, so these are our students in district receiving services within our schools. Uh, we are, we have been very steady over the past five, six years, uh, just over eight hundred students. And that's, this comes out to about fourteen percent of our population, which is um, I think slightly under the state average and it's it's a um, it the nice thing is it's been consistent. Dr. Sawyer?
Thanks, and just to to wrap up in terms of our class size guidelines that the school committee has had in place for many years, um, you can see them on the slide there, what they look like and, you know, what we just over time have have defined as over enrolled. Uh, if you go to the next slide, you can see that, you know, we remain in a really good spot where in kindergarten, those all those yellows and reds at the ten years back, um, those were done purposely because we didn't have a lot of full day options. So we really pushed the numbers in our full day because of the demand. Uh, but we, you know, since the advent of the uh twenty two thousand twenty one override and the opening of the new Beal School, uh, we've been able to uh have, with one exception, you know, being within or under our class size guidelines at the kindergarten level. Um, and that remains the case uh this year as well. Uh, as far as uh grades one and two, our primary grades, again, the last several years since the override, uh, we've been able to be uh in a strong position uh at or under those uh uh class size policy numbers. Um, so we're pleased we're, that remains to be the case this year. Similar uh look here at our grade three and four display in the next slide um that shows, um, you know, again, we're we're within that twenty two to twenty four guideline across the board uh across grade three and grade four. And similarly at grade five uh in grade through grade eight, uh, we've had a few outliers even just because of the space we have available at Sherwood and Oak and and the way the teams are constructed with two person teacher teams at Sherwood and four teacher teams at Oak. Uh, but uh this year, for the second time uh in recent history, all four grade cohorts are within that twenty two uh or or under that twenty two to twenty four guideline. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions the committee has on the class sizes and enrollment uh pre K through eight.
So there's there's some reports, I think, maybe last year, during the graduation time, they're saying that that's the biggest, largest class that would be ever thereafter, which means the population will be in the the graduation class size overall nationally supposed to are expected to decrease year over year because of the birth rates and whatever it is, right? So it looks like our trend is not in that direction. So we are still strong across the all the class sections. So my question is, I think I know that Dr. Sawyer mentioned like we have a fifteen percent increase in the current class, high school class to the to their kindergarten or first grade. So what would we, our expectation, do we do that to every cohort when they enter into the class? So what would be the incoming class into high school when they join? Based on our historic trends, so is that fifteen percent average? Or is it consist, like, is it fluctuates? It looks like the data, it looks like it's not, we should not fluctuate too much. But are we confident like that fifteen percent will be?
I I don't, I'm not sure how confident we can be fifteen percent. Actually, if if you look in your packet, page fifteen of the actual report that you have, the more detailed report in your packet, of all the cohorts we've seen, the the current class of two thousand twenty-six, our current seniors, that growth has been the the highest, but last year's about eight-and-a-quarter percent over that time period. For that, we range between anywhere four-and-a-half to seven-and-a-half to nine percent. Few class, back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, we actually had negative numbers because enough students were leaving for private school or leaving for vocational technical education when they hit high school level, that the numbers were actually less than they were at elementary level. But so that's been something that shifted over time, we're retaining more students. When we do the class size projection report, you'll be able to see the the actual ratio is usually based on a five-year average of how much one grade grows to the next, like what our numbers are at. One thing that's in your your more detailed report as a reminder is that one thing that we are seeing is a little more of a dip happening between sixth and seventh grade for a cohort of students because of St. John's adding middle school grades for seven and eight. It used to be that we'd lose a certain number of students each year to St. John's in grade nine. Now, a lot of those losses happen at the grade seven level, but not as many at grade nine because most of those students are already there. So that's been something that's changed a little bit over time there. But I think to to your point, Mr. Veligapudi, I think just looking at what does that look like coming up in terms of how we're seeing fluctuations in growth over time? And that's something when we do the enrollment projection, we'll be able to illustrate pretty clearly for you.
Thanks, and then the patent, so there's a trend line going down. So is that just because of the Beal redistricting? Is that, or is something else happening in there?
Yeah, I don't think we have a, you know, a great answer for exactly why. It's a little lower than what was predicted. It started off after redistricting about what we expected, but we've had a couple of cohorts that have been smaller than are typical there. We have a small second-grade cohort there, but their kindergarten cohort's a little stronger this year. So I think we have to keep an eye on that in terms of seeing what the trends look like. Obviously, the smaller the population, the more small swings, you know, are a little more dramatic. If you have a larger population, it's going to be a little less impactful along those lines. So, yeah, I think, you know, we saw a little dip at Floral Street this year, but again, some of that was the kindergarten being smaller. We also had, and just so, I mean, I mentioned this to some committee members, I know, we actually had some attrition where we had a teacher leave at Floral Street, I think in June or July. And then, you know, we monitored the the numbers because the second-grade numbers were coming in lower than we expected in terms of not as much growth. We ended up not filling that position and it actually worked out fine in terms of the class-size numbers. So that's one of the reasons it's so key for us to be monitoring. We don't just look at it on October first, we're monitoring enrollment all year long and then projecting ahead and then seeing if that's coming true as we get into the summer months and families are registering and people are moving to the community for the new school year to see if we're right-sized in terms of the amount of staffing that we have. But, you know, we'll have to see, time will tell if we see if that becomes a trend. Prior to Beal, the previous redistricting was when Floral Street School opened in nineteen ninety-seven. And we had a remarkable level of stability. The work that was done at the time by Diane Abbott, the registrar, and Patrick Collins, who was in Mr. Girardi's seat at the time, the the consistency of the, you know, the size of the different elementary cohorts by geographical area was remarkably consistent over time. I hope we're, did as good a job with Beal. I think the, one of the pieces that's going to be really interesting is with the new housing growth that's coming online over the next several years. Some of those housing developments are in the Floral District, for example. So maybe if there's a demographic dip, that might be offset by some of this new housing coming online. Pat may not have as much new housing in that geographic development. So we'll have to see what that looks like. I know in other communities, sometimes there's targeted redistricting because it turns out that one, you know, elementary school might be a little lower than was expected and one might be growing a little faster than expected and you might do some some rejiggering at some point. People want to avoid that, obviously, no one wants to have their their children redistricted in the middle of their elementary experience, so that's complicated. I'm not suggesting that's going to happen anytime soon, but those are the kinds of things that you could look at in the future if you see a trend in one place where the numbers are really coming down. Or, you know, as attrition happens, you know, you you don't have as many sections there and it becomes a little bit of a smaller school. So there's different ways you can address that over time.
May I ask one more?
Sure.
One last question. So do we, with the dataset that we have, can we drill down which demographics are we losing? Is it possible to do drill down? So one could be, does it, the immigrant population families, does it have any impact on this enrollment dip? And then also, if we can drill down, which part, which demographic population are we losing?
Sure.
Is it possible to drill down?
Well, I will say just, you know, without having any hard hard data to to provide, but we had, I believe, at the highest point with the migrant population, fifty-five students attending Shrewsbury Public Schools coming from the shelter. This year, we we had, or last year, we had somewhere in the twenty, we we came down to somewhere in the twenties and and we're much lower than that now. So that primarily impacted, most of, all of the elementary school students went to Beal. We had students who were then at Sherwood and Oak and then at Shrewsbury High School. The majority of them were elementary students.
One, one little question. So does it, I don't know, just thinking here loud, do we see any impact on the immigration enforcement having an impact on the decline in enrollment by the federal government?
I don't think we could tie these numbers to that. We wouldn't know, we wouldn't know what that looks like. We're certainly not, we're certainly not seeing, like, students who were enrolled with us then having to be leaving, that we're not seeing that in Shrewsbury. You know, I think your your original question, it would be really difficult to drill down and say like, these are the students who have moved in or these are the students who have moved out. You know, they're self-reported race and ethnicity, but in terms of knowing whether someone's an immigrant or not, we don't, we don't, we don't collect that data. That's that's not legally data that we would collect anyways. So that would be really hard to to understand. You know, certainly, we know that we've become a much more diverse school district over time with families coming from all over the world for lots of different reasons. And here for, whether that's, you know, working at UMass Medical or in the high-tech industry or or whatever it might be. Or, you know, we certainly have a a population of of Brazilian families that's grown over time. You know, the number of our English learners, and I think as we look more carefully at, something we look at like, what languages are they speaking? What does that look like? You know, that's something that over time, over the time I've been in Shrewsbury, our Brazilian family population has ebbed and flowed. And sometimes that depends on the economy, it's a variety of things that affect that. So I think, you know, for us, it's, you know, do we see any particular trends where in terms of the total numbers? And then the, and then, you know, in terms of certainly English learners, we saw that number really move up a few years ago. You know, we had to address that in terms of budgetary resources. It's ticked down a little bit this year, whether that continues on a trend or not. I think time will tell as far as that that goes.
Thank you.
Sorry, I think, you know, as we look at this going forward, looking at the demographics and changes, as Dr. Sawyer said, housing starts, you know, we know we've got a lot in the pipeline and maybe more to come, one. And I also think the demographic of age, the age of the population and, you know, as housing turns over, I know my street, like, all the kids grew up and now it's totally turned over and the homes are being sold and it's mostly new families with little children. So I think, you know, looking at those changes that we can't predict, but I think looking at the age of your population and housing turnover is another area that we could see increases where maybe the Patton District hasn't had a lot of change over, but could happen down the road. So I think we always have to make sure we're looking at, because we're not seeing wild swings. It's pretty steady throughout.
Thank you very much for the report. I was really pleased to see the class-size averages for the elementary and middle school levels, especially with the, you know, implementation of the new literacy program, that these are, you know, within our guidelines, good-size classes and, you know, not not oversubscribed, so very pleased with that information. So thank you. Anyone else have anything further?
Nope.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the district strategic goals and action steps for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. At our last meeting on October eighth, we were presented with a draft of the district strategic goals and action steps for this upcoming upcoming school year for our review. And the draft was posted for public review and comment. Dr. Sawyer announced his retirement effective the end of June of two thousand twenty-six. So an updated version of the proposed goals and action steps was included in our packet, which included our work around the search that will be conducted for his replacement. So other than that, the, there were no changes made. Did anyone, and I did not receive any feedback, did anyone?
No.
Okay, so does anyone have any further discussion or comments before we take a vote?
Did we get any feedback from the community?
I I did not receive any, yeah. So I will take a motion that the committee vote to approve the enclosed proposed district strategic goals and action steps for two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-six as presented.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is the proposed Policy Five-Ninety, the Middle School Pathway Exploration. A first reading of the proposed new Policy Five-Ninety, Middle School Pathway Exploration was presented at our last school committee meeting on October eighth. The draft was posted for public viewing and feedback in advance of our vote this evening. Mr. Ms. Sharifapoor and Mr. Veligapudi are members of the policy subcommittee. I did not receive any feedback on the policy, did anyone?
I did not.
All right, does anyone have any further comments or discussion regarding the policy? Okay.
I just, I just want to mention that legal counsel did review it and and had no suggestions for any edits.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Okay, so I will take a motion that the committee vote to approve Policy Five-Ninety, Middle School Pathway Exploration as presented.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a draft of our budget priorities, guidance and calendar. Mr. Girardi? Great, the document titled Priorities and Guidance for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Seven Budget Development provides the community with information about the school committee's priorities for the FY twenty-seven school department budget. It also is designed to provide guidance to the superintendent of schools and school department administration regarding the development of its initial fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven school department budget proposal. Myself and Ms. Fritz are members of the finance subcommittee and we work with Mr. Girardi to develop the enclosed drafts of the FY twenty-seven budget priorities and guidance and a calendar for the fiscal year twenty-seven budget cycle. These drafts, documents, we're presenting them tonight for discussion and feedback and we will, we will request a vote to improve the final versions at our next meeting on November fifth. The budget priorities document provides the community with information about school committee priorities for the school department budget that will be appropriated by town meeting. Shrewsbury Public Schools has had a strong track record of delivering excellent academic results in a cost-effective manner, being in the top fifteen percent for academic outcomes while spending in the bottom fifteen percent. FY twenty-seven must strategically identify risks to ensure long-term stability and excellence. And in developing these priorities, we focused on advancing the district's strategic plan, which is now in its third year. The district is continuing to use data to develop and refine action steps to advance our commitments and to the strategic goals. And during the two thousand twenty-five, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we had partnered with District Management Group to conduct a full evaluation of the district's financial system. And this report provided a ten-year review of the district's budget history as well as looking forward to the following, you know, the the ten years following to just give us a budget project, projection. DMG provided us with three different budgetary key risks and strategic directives. The first one was to initiate a strategy to reduce the district's over-reliance on non-local funds such as grants, fees and philanthropy for mission-critical services. The second goal was to look at our needs around curriculum and instruction, including career and technical education and using universal screeners to identify students in need of support and enhancing instructional practices. The third area to be, you know, examined was to look at evolving student need, including our view of special education and student support services to identify opportunities to improve outcomes for learners with diverse needs while effectively managing costs. So those were some of the guiding principles that we looked at when we were developing our priorities. Ms. Fritz, if you want to have?
Sure.
Add anything?
Yep, and I think you you laid it out. It's a roadmap for us as we move into FY twenty-seven. So we're, you know, we're guided by our strategic priorities and goals, the DMG analysis and always being data-driven. And we're looking at, you know, what are the priorities that we feel need to be addressed as we move into the next budget year? And of course, the overarching priority is that we meet the commitments of the two thousand twenty-one override agreement with the SLUP Board. And we also are looking for resources for key district needs and priorities, which were included in the twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-seven strategic plan, to review enrollment and determine personnel necessary for class sizes that reflect our school committee guidelines, to further advance the literacy initiative in grades pre-K through eight, to provide support for students who are not meeting educational benchmarks, to allocate required resources to deliver mandated educational services for our E English learner population, to determine funding for tuition and transportation required for the district to continue our partnership with the Leicester High School, to provide Chapter Seventy-four vocational technical education, to further develop in-district career and technical educational programs at the high school, to continue to assess special education and student services models for effectiveness and efficiency, to consider how areas of the budget that are currently subsidized through fees such as transportation and athletics might continue to be adjusted in order to reduce our over-reliance on non-local funds and to potentially reduce the impact of fees on families and to advance the feasibility of study and the expanding or renovating of the high school. And then we have our assumptions and guidelines that we will use as we work through the budget process. We will work within our financial guidelines, again, of the override agreement, provide adequate resources to meet all legal mandates with factored terms of the recently settled collective bargaining agreements and other collateral contractual obligations and consider the impact of these on the upcoming fiscal year, to provide sufficient resources to maintain our existing educational program and staffing level to meet mandates and priorities, utilize the information from the DMG analysis, estimate level funding for all expected federal and state grants, but also be aware that we might need to have potential cost shifting if these federal funds are reduced or not funded in their entirety. Review fund, review fee and tuition levels for all programs and make recommendations to see if that's another area where we can reduce the burden on families. Examine ways to reduce or shift costs in order to achieve district priorities without requiring additional funding allocations wherever possible. And again, given space constraints at the high school, we will assume that there is, at the secondary schools, we will assume there's no new school choice seats to be added this year. So that is our draft of priorities and assumptions and it will be open to the public and to all of us to see if there's any additions, things we've missed, things that need to be added.
Thank you both for for working on this as our policy subcommittee. I think this was, it's a really I think this was, um, it's a really good blend of our strategic plan going forward. And last year, we did a lot of work with DMG and that was really good information that came out of that for us to looking forward. We looked backwards, but, you know, going forward, I think that this is a good, like you said, this is a good roadmap for where to go from here. I certainly hope that once we put this information out, that the, the general public will look at this too and be involved in this, this process to see, you know, really what our priorities are and where we'd like to go. But I think this is also a really good building block for future discussions with Select Board and the Finance Committee. And I'm looking forward to, last year, we had, for the first time in a, in a long time, a tri-board meeting. Um, and I think that there's good information that has to come out of that for priorities through the town, the school, the Finance Committee as a whole. Um, and I think this lays a really good, uh, framework for what our talking points are and where we can kind of go from here. So, I mean, there's a lot of work and budget season is just beginning. But this, I think, is, is really good information for anybody to look at, um, to know where our priorities are as a, a school district. So, thank you for, for doing this.
Yeah, I caught the, um, sentiment, um, especially, thanks for, thank you both for being, um, working on this and also giving us assumptions. Especially with the DMG that we have, uh, look back and also we look, DMG look forward for next, um, ten years. So I think taking that, uh, was one of the guiding, uh, tool to develop this budget is, it's always makes, uh, obviously, um, very prudent uh, so that we know exactly how to, uh, where, where to prioritize and how to implement the strategy appropriately during this period. So, yeah, it's a start, starting of the budget period. It's a long way to go. But I, I appreciate you bringing all this together and also encourage the commu- uh, community members to look for the DMG report and also the strategic priorities on the website and, uh, we actively participate in all the, uh, budgeting hearings, opens, um, public hearings and everything so that they feel and understand what's happening here.
Thank you. Mr. Girardi, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I think maybe just, um, kind of the second piece here, I don't know if you were planning on going into that next, but just the, the calendar, the draft calendar that we were planning on incorporating and taking some feedback as to when things might come to school committee as far as the conversations for special education, curriculum, instruction, to make sure that we time them wisely so that there's time to have those discussions and time to do work. So that when it does come time to present, um, our initial budget in February, our, um, hopefully the, you know, the final budget in April and then in preparation for town meeting in May, that, uh, there's adequate time for each of those conversations for, for the different pieces of the budget.
Thank you. Yes. So that, um, calendar is also, will be posted with our, um, guidance and priorities to the school committee website tomorrow. Um, so we'd welcome any feedback on that as well.
And I think, you know, during our, our subcommittee meeting, we mentioned, you know, maybe changing some, the way some of the reports come to us this year. And maybe some of the more volatile, which could be the special ed area, could be more volatile. Have that earlier just in case there's changes as we move through. And I think the other thing we talked about was, um, we've got workshops built in here, dates for workshops, but this possibility of having to add additional dates as we start the work.
Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you'd like to add?
I appreciate the clarity, uh, and I think that, uh, you know, it gives, uh, really strong and clear guidance to, uh, the administration as we start to work to develop, uh, scenarios for your consideration. So appreciate it and, uh, happy to hear any feedback anyone has. And, uh, would love to have you approve this formally at your, I believe it's November fifth is your next regular scheduled meeting. And, uh, we're already in the thick of it. So we're working towards fiscal year twenty-seven as we speak.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. The minutes from the school committee meeting held on October eighth, um, have been provided. Did anyone have any amendments or corrections? So they will be accepted as distributed. And then we do need to go into executive session this evening. So I will need a motion, um, for Purpose A, the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Purpose Seven, open meeting law, General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-Two-FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose Three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. C, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff and/or administrators, Purpose Two. And D, for the purpose of addressing general law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, federal and Massachusetts student record laws, Purpose Seven, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. This requires, oh, do I have a motion?
So moved?
Second.
Uh, requires a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Fritz?
Aye.
Ms. Sharifapur?
Aye.
Mr. Veligapudi?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.